Anyone else like to come up today and speak about anything that's not on today's agenda?
Norman Manil, West Pleasant Hill Road. How many of you know what next Tuesday is?
Exactly.
How many of you people take it for granted? I'm a veteran. We're taking too many rights away from the people. You need to go overseas and see what you get to enjoy here because people like me have put our life on the line. Some people have lost their lives, lost limbs. I don't think you people have any respect for us veterans. Maybe you should go into the military and see what you've got to earn to enjoy it. I did. How many other people haven't? A lot of you. You can give up your career for just two years. Pat Tillman was a professional football player and he gave up his multi-million dollar career and he served in the military and he died for this country. But some of you people don't want to. It's wrong. Nothing has been said in the paper or nothing about Veterans Day coming up because you're not going to meet next Monday, are you? You're taking away our rights that we've died for, served for. You want to take our guns away. You don't want us to carry a gun. And yet, we've deserved it. We deserved the right. We fought for you. I don't like it. This country is going down the wrong road. And another situation, the ladies are having to step up because men don't want to serve in the military. And I do thank the ladies. They need to get themselves a pat on the back. So I think people need to step back and appreciate what you've got. We take too much for granted in this country. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak about anything that's not on today's agenda? We do not have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1 approved the minutes of October 28, 2013. Item 6.2 authorized repair of the River Pump at the River Pump Station, project number 13311 by Lane Christensen Company in an amount not to exceed $18,076.50. Item 6.3 award of contract for the 2013 hike and bike trail, project number 132975, in amount not to exceed $60,512.95. Item 6.4 acceptance of a permanent public trail easement dedication for the hike and bike trail along the south side of Schilling Road, east of Ohio, to the flood control levee.
Is there anything a commissioner would like removed or amended from the consent agenda?
Mr. Hardy, anything on those minutes?
No, they're perfect.
Okay.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We have nothing in administration today. We'll move on to development business.
Item 8.1 first reading ordinance number 131016, amending chapter eight, sections 8, 171, 8, 193, 8, 191, and 8, 192 of the Sino Code by adding a definition for volunteers and providing when volunteers can perform work under exemptions from the building contractor and skilled trade contractor licensing and contract registration requirements.
Mr. Bronkenator.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is a change to the ordinance that was initiated by staff, by myself particularly. It has been a long-term standing practice to allow volunteers to do work on certain types of projects. One of the existing best examples is Habitat for Humanity. They use volunteer work. Even the person who is going to become the homeowner actually puts in some sweat equity. We also have Volunteer Connection, some other church organizations in town who do volunteer work for the community. And especially now with our property maintenance code, I anticipate seeing more and more of that coming around. So I took it upon myself to go to the BAB and to try to change the language because currently the language in the contractors' requirements says that you either need to be a licensed contractor or an employee of a licensed contractor. And it's pretty cut and dried, black and white. And I tend to be a black and white kind of guy sometimes, although I live in a world of gray. So I decided to make it clearer and to kind of work through this. And like I said, the current contractor licensing does not indicate that these practices are permissible, but however, it's been common practice and it's going on daily. So I just kind of wanted to clean it up. An employee, the definition is there, it's an individual who works in the service of another person when the employer has the right to control and direct the individual who performs the services, not only as to the result to be accomplished by the work, but also as to the details and means by which that result is accomplished, and in relation to whom the employer withholds federal income tax, social security tax from the wages paid from the work, and pays social security tax and unemployment tax. So that part A and B to that definition is the one that kind of stuck in my craw. So I did take it to the Building Advisory Board and the Building Advisory Board language, I presented some language to them and they were comfortable with that. As a matter of fact, so comfortable that there were no questions of staff, there were no discussion, and it passed unanimously. So we're coming to you today with that language, but it has been modified. I will tell you that we did add additional language and kind of tweak it a little bit with help of the city manager's office and with legal input also. And that is what we have before you today, is that modified, the modified change, or the modified language. And we believe that these are fully within the intent of the Building Advisory Board. So we believe that it's in keeping with that intent. And basically, in a nutshell, I don't want to go through all of these. Basically, what we are proposing is that work that requires a permit, that type of work still would require a licensed contractor to pull the permit. Habitat for Humanity has a licensed contractor. They have electricians and mechanical contractors, plumbing contractors, who are all listed on the permit, and they supervise that work that's being done. And that's what we would propose to be, to still put in place, and that language is in the code that way. The other main thing that we would be asking is that permit, or work that does not require a permit could be done by volunteers. So that is the other part of, part B of this whole proposal. So basically, it's just stating that if you are going to do work that requires a permit, you can volunteer to do that work as long as you're being supervised by a licensed contractor. A licensed contractor pulls the permit. The other caveat that we put in here was the idea that, because we put in a definition for a volunteer, and that definition is a person performing work without any form of compensation in exchange for the work performed, including without limitation, a person performing work without personal compensation as a member of a philanthropic service organization receiving compensation for the collective work of its members. So in other words, and if this required a permit, they would still have to work under a licensed contractor, but that philanthropic organization, or that non-for-profit, or that organization could receive payment for that work in a form of a donation or actual out-and-out payment for that work. And we still believe that that's within the intent of the Building Advisory Board, and it's also within my intent to do that because those situations do arise. There is one thing, we also, before I get to that, we also would like to take this opportunity to alphabetize the definitions. They were put in more of a chronological order at the time that the contractor licensing had come about, but it is kind of distracting and we, you know, every time I go to look for a definition, I'm alphabetical, again, that black and white kind of thing. So anyway, there is one, of course, with all of my blue sheets and presentations, there is, there is an error. And hopefully, that won't happen in the future. But on page three of the blue sheet, and this is just kind of an omission in the blue sheet in my haste in trying to meet the deadline and getting it in, and it's a cut and paste error, and it's because I'm still computer challenged to some degree. But anyway, technologically challenged. On page three, section 8-191, in that work to be, or the language to be modified, number five there, it says work performed by an owner, and then we have the word "or" crossed out. Work to be performed by an owner, bless you, the owner's employees, and then that the following additions, deletions, modifications is underlined is the part that should not be in there. And that's not in the code existing now. That's my faux pas. That was my cut and paste. And instead, it should say, "or volunteers designated by the owner on the owner's property when the work performed does not require a permit." So once again, that should read, number five, work performed by an owner, the owner's employees, or volunteers designated by the owner on the owner's property when the work performed does not require the permit. And I'd like to point out that it is correct in the ordinance. So once again, that was my bad. The other little thing that we're doing, doing in 8-191 is just kind of clarifying a little bit, or I'm sorry, 8-192, on that same page, right below my faux pas there. We are also adding, we're adding the word "either" and "or" as a volunteer, so that that charging statement should read, "it shall be unlawful for any person to install, repair, or otherwise perform or cause to be performed either for hire or as a volunteer the following work." We just wanted to make sure that that's one of those registration items that sometimes does not require a permit, but we don't want the volunteers to be doing masonry and structural concrete and things like that if it doesn't require a permit. So we feel that this is in conformance with the strategic plan and assisting the community in proceeding further with volunteer work. Like I say, we do have several organizations and more are coming to us, like I said, with the property maintenance code to wanting to do volunteer work. So we're bringing to you the following options, and I do have the correct options today. Number one is approve the text amendment as proposed by staff to sections 8-183, 8-191, and 8-192 of the Salina Municipal Code, clarifying when volunteers may work under certain conditions. Item number two, modify the proposed language of the revised code amendment language and return with those modifications at the second reading without further review by the commission. Number three, deny the request for an amendment resulting in no change to the code. And number four, refer this matter back to the BAB for further review and recommendation. And staff recommends option number one, and I am available for questions.
Is there any questions for staff?
I don't know if they have a question, I have a comment. Under section two of the proposed ordinance, number five, both in the red, both A and B, the word "preformed" should probably be "performed."
I knew you'd get something today. I knew it.
Good point.
Folks, now you know why you voted for it.
Number five says "performed."
It brings something to the table.
Mine says "per," oh, you're, okay.
Is this going to affect Fall Fix-Up Day at all with the volunteers there? And have you run any of this by Habitat?
This will, this will make all of that legal.
Okay. Because it hasn't been, is what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, as it states, unless they are employees, taking out employees, I mean, like I said, again, I'm real black and white, and when it says you have to be an employee, I'm doing this for Fall Fix-Up Day, for Volunteer Connection, for Habitat for Humanity, for the Ashby House that, you know, had a contractor that wanted to do work, and that's who I'm doing it for, yes.
Just as, this may be semantics, but this will make the ordinance match our past practice. We've been allowing that work all along. So they haven't been doing it without our knowledge or illegally from our perspective. We're just matching the code up to our practice.
And my question goes along with that in that I'm a little bit, reading through this earlier, I highlighted a bunch of stuff because I was a little concerned because of that question right there, because when you went through section 8-192 with the registration required, that says it shall be unlawful for any person to install, repair, or otherwise perform or cause to be performed either for hire or as a volunteer the following work, roofing is mentioned there, wood and metal framing, all of those things I've done as a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity. So how does that, is that going to be allowed by volunteers, or is it going to be, as 8-192 says, "it shall be unlawful for any person to do that"? I mean, and I just pointed out that, of course, there are 10 of those, and I had a number of those highlighted, demolition and removal of buildings and structures. And maybe some of this is just definitions, but that would seem to me to be maybe a storage shed. Does that fit into volunteers being able to tear down an old shed or garage?
Again, those are required to have a permit, those items. The one that throws me is the roofing, because that doesn't require a permit, and I think...
Well, actually, it's a little complicated, but the language that you're describing spells out the prohibition, but if you go all the way to the bottom, it provides that the requirements of this section shall be subject to the same exemptions applicable to the building contractor licensing requirements set forth in section 8-183. And then if you go back to section 8-183, you pick up the volunteer exemption.
Okay.
So it's an attempt to get away from someone trying to classify themselves as a volunteer for the purposes of not being registered, but avail Habitat for Humanity or not-for-profit group of the volunteer exemption in 8-183.
All right. I appreciate that, because we don't have, in our packet, we didn't get the entire thing, so I couldn't refer to those particular sections.
Yeah, sorry.
That's good.
Thanks for the save, Mike, but yeah, that's how we tracked that down.
Okay. Great.
Thank you for the clarification on both Alvin and Mr. Shag. I appreciate that. Do we have any other questions for staff? Do we have any public comment on this matter?
Hi, I'm Steve Komets, Executive Director of the Salina Rescue Mission, 1716 Summers Road. I am the one that sent the email to you folks dated September 12, asking for clarification, asking questions, and I'm still concerned, I don't think I understand it yet. And so I'm asking, will you send it back to the Building Advisory Board so that nonprofits can come and ask better questions without taking all of this precious time? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dick Brown. For the last five years, I've been active in the field volunteer for Habitat. And I am concerned, and our organization is concerned, about the effect of the attempt here to make it better. We appreciate the efforts to make it better, but we don't think we're quite there yet, and we would very much like to have a chance to appear before the Building Advisory Board. We have not done that yet. And we find a lot of it confusing, some of it contradictory, and we also think that some of the prohibitions are unnecessary, and some of that has been, you've made reference to some of that here today. And actually, several of our concerns have been addressed here in this meeting, but we don't think just addressing them verbally without working through the details on the regulations is sufficient, which is why we'd like to see it go back so we can meet with them. And, you know, a lot of this is interpretation, and we still see room for interpretation that is not intended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I appreciate you thinking our time is precious. I'm not sure mine is, but I'm sure the other fours is. Maybe we could get this cleared up for you today rather than send it back. I understand, and I think there was a little confusion maybe on Commissioner Blanchard's, but I think once it was made there, let's make sure we're not adding a lot of work to something that may cover both of what you need. Maybe you could spell out specifically areas that you think may have an effect on your, on the habitats and on the rescue mission, and maybe we could just get it cleared up today and move it through. Because I was kind of with Commissioner Blanchard. I was initially looking, thinking, wait a second, that sounds like it's removing a whole bunch of people, but as we walked through it and I looked back at 183, it sounds like actually it is, it is making legal what you've been doing for years, and I don't think we'll exempt anything. But if there's something specific that you have a question on that you feel like may be exempted, maybe we could just clear it up today and move this on down the road and make sure you're covered.
Some of our concerns are, there are several sections there that both list definitions of volunteers and list types of work that cannot be done. As I read through those, some of them seem to make it more permissive and some of them make it less permissive. And so that's one of the things I refer to when I talk about interpretation. Oh, I'm sorry. At least this isn't a funeral. Ruined my train of thought here.
Well, I think, I think you may be seeing kind of what Commissioner Blanchard was, and that is when you look through these unlawful areas, is that kind of your concern, the structural or concrete, the wood or metal framing erection?
Most of our concerns have been addressed here by one person or the other today, but I don't think they've been answered by one person or the other. And so they are really more restrictive than we would like. And to tell the truth, we have been doing, I guess, perhaps more work than we should be doing, according, even though, well, that's just a fact.
Maybe you could give us a scenario that your concern may not happen. Maybe that would happen. Maybe that could, if you could let us know something that you feel like this is, and be informative for maybe all of us.
Roofing is one.
Sure.
The current house that we're building, the Salina area techno college, is doing 60% of the work, but a church is doing the rest of it, and the rest of it is painting and trim, not technical work. We expect it to be done good, but that would be prohibited under this because right now the technical college is, we're operating under their permit for the framing and all that work. But to tell the truth, when we get around to finishing the house, they're not going to be there. I'm going to be there, but I'm not a licensed contractor.
So is it more of a, you don't have a general, a general contractor that's covering everything then, or?
This, we do have a general on all work except for this instance with the school. But a lot of emphasis has been put on today on the general being there and having a representative there all the time. Now, if you push me to be completely honest, no, that isn't the case.
I see no reason why this couldn't go back to the Building Advisory Board and just make sure that everything's transparent. I know that I worked for a number of years with Habitat for Humanity, maybe 10 years or more, and even then, we didn't always have somebody on site that was anything other than just a volunteer. And I, you know, I think those things need to be very well clarified for these folks that do a lot of volunteer work.
Now, I want to give special credit to the department because they are trying to protect Habitat. But if I may kind of take the liberty to speak for some other organizations in town, Ashby House, for example. Ashby House makes a lot of use of volunteers, and there has been, have been some serious questions on what they could do, and I don't, well, I think this may address those questions. I think it shuts down Ashby House's volunteers, I think is what it does.
Yeah, I don't see that. I don't see that. I think this is very, I think ultimately, in the end, the person who has signed off is responsible for the work. Does it specifically say the person has to be there 24/7, or? I don't, I don't get that. I mean, to me, I think that, I think that you're covered. I think even in your instance where you say the school is out there, there's ultimately somebody who has pulled the permit that's the contractor on it. You're still using volunteer work, which is protected under section 8-183. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, I understand the scenario in your head, you may think it's not, but is, am I missing something here that that would not be completely allowed, or?
I think the issue may be whether there is a general contractor, whether there is a licensed contractor that has pulled the permit. In terms of being there all the time, we've had this conversation before, in terms of the role of a qualified individual and their name is on the project, but they aren't necessarily there 100% of the time. They're overseeing it and accepting responsibility for it. My suggestion would be that possibly before going back to the Building Advisory Board, maybe staff needs to have a conversation with them in the event that it is addressed by the ordinance language as it is, or if it's within the intent of the Building Advisory Board, we could come directly back to you rather than...
Yeah, maybe that's a smarter move than sending it all the way back.
Is that something that you would anticipate could be handled between a first and second reading?
I think we could report back to you, we're ready to go to second reading, or we could report back to you what the alternative would be.
Commissioners, I might defer this question to legal counsel, but now that we've openly said, we weren't supposed to allow that before, but it's been a practice. Staff's practice doesn't make it legal, you have to make it legal. I'd recommend that you go ahead and approve first readings so that we put that blanket on top of most all the work we're talking about. We can bring second reading back at whatever time it takes for us to figure out if we've caught what we need to catch.
I think that makes sense. I think maybe the peace of mind for you is that really, I don't think anybody's coming to this trying to restrict what you're doing, just trying to legalize it and make it there. I would personally agree that I think there does need to be a contractor on any of these issues that we've mentioned, but I don't think that's really going to deter any of the volunteer work. I mean, we're talking about things that are structural in nature. We don't want a bunch of volunteers, even though they may be well-qualified, who's that going to fall back on? You know, if the building literally falls down later, who's that fall on? There has to be somebody that was licensed and oversaw. But I don't think that'll necessarily do away with any volunteers. And I mean, I don't get that they're trying to limit that here, but I agree, now that we've broached this, we probably need to get this passed and make sure that this work doesn't have to, because if we don't, you understand where we're going. If we don't vote this today, I think that pretty much means any of that work that's going on right now needs to cease until we move forward. So I think we need to move forward to allow you to keep doing kind of what they're doing.
That's my point, Commissioner, and one other suggestion, the commission wishes to consider is, under the pending legislation doctrine, there is a concept where I would expect Mr. DeVores might feel a little bit conflicted right now as he looks to his enforcement responsibility pending resolution of these matters in the second reading on the ultimate ordinance. It is certainly within your expression here between first and second reading to suspend any enforcement activity by a building official in relation to this sort of volunteer activity that...
Yeah.
Well, if I may speak for a larger community of volunteer organizations, I'm sure that there is a desire to meet with the department or with the board or with somebody and discuss these from a real serious standpoint. You know, a lot of these things that are in here, I would say were put in in the 50s and 60s because of union activity. That's no longer a consideration. We do appreciate the value and the expertise of the union members, but some of them, like painting, which is covered just the same way as plumbing, to tell the truth, pretty much, I don't think that's the same concern, and we think we need to address those differences between the type of work. between the type of work, and we, we don't think we've gone that far in this attempt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, for sure, I think, I mean.
Would you mind if I just gave one illustration as a question? Would you mind?
I think it's great, yeah.
We, we have, we have a mission. We always get permits. We always have. We want to do things legally, lawfully, correct on, okay? We have a general contractor almost over every project. We have a licensed electrician who comes in, and he does his work, and what I've read, we can't even help the electrician bring in anything. We can't help him. That's what, that's my understanding. But I know that's what you, we've been told, that's not what they're saying. But what happens if I have a volunteer who's not an electrician that wants to come out, the electrician is onsite, he's got the blueprints, the drawings, all this other, and we're running conduit, surface mount conduit? Can our volunteers put that surface mount conduit on the wall with the junction boxes? And once it's looked at by the, by the licensed electrician or the general contractor, and they want to run the wire and they inspect it, can that still be done?
Maybe a good question for Elvin, yeah.
That was one thing that the Building Advisory Board did not want to happen, skilled trades being done by volunteers.
I, I understand that electricity is a pretty serious thing. I know, I know nothing of electricity, and I do a lot of volunteer work. You would not want me messing electricity.
Well.
I don't, blueprints or, and somebody guiding me or not.
I want to hook it up.
Exactly, I don't want to touch it.
But I, I think he brings up a good point, and I would tend to agree with you. I think at the end of the day, you've got volunteers who are willing to do the work, you have a trained professional who isn't going to allow anything. Now, my thought would be, and I mean, I understand the Building Advisory Board has looked at this a lot closer than I have, my, my, my thought on this simply would be that if you have volunteers who the, the electrical contractor says, go in here and run all this conduit and put all these boxes in place, he comes back two hours later and says, it's not right, that's his own issue, he has to rip it all off and start over again, so be it. But I, I would almost disagree with the Building Advisory Board on that aspect. I think exactly right, running conduit and boxes, it still has to pass the muster, so to speak.
Exactly.
And so to me, if you've got volunteers, I would agree, I don't want to limit what volunteers can do, but I expect the standards to be no different than it would for anybody else. But I don't see why they would single that one out, because ultimately at the end of the day, it's that licensed contractor, his license is on the line, he is going to be forced to check that off and make sure that it's up to code. I assume you inspect all electrical connections before they go in, and if they're up to code, I don't see a problem if it's that, if it's building a skyscraper, it's building anything, if somebody's ultimately there and we've got volunteers who want to do it. Ultimately, the, the work has to be capable, or it won't, it won't simply pass your inspection. So I, I don't see where any definition of that, and I appreciate the mayor's concern, for sure. I think if you're thinking that that's the work that's not going to be inspected or anything else, but the fact that it's going to be inspected and has a checks and balances process, I would have a problem, have no problem with any work being done that way unless somebody could bring cause that, that it's dangerous, and that's my concern at the end of the day, is it health and safety, is it, does it put anyone at risk? And I think if you have a licensed professional checking off, I don't think that it rises to that. I mean, I, any discussion on that would be.
Yeah, Mr. DeVores, I have a question about the Build, the Building Authority Board. They're kind of not wanting to see that happen. Was that perhaps based on the fact that from an economic development type of perspective of saying, we have trained people in the community, and if you, if volunteers are doing all of that, then there's going to be less opportunity for a trained individual to?
That is not my feeling, that that's really what they were attempting to do. I think they're more concerned that those are specialized trades.
Public safety.
And specialized items, and especially the electrical. I mean, the plumbing, if it doesn't work, it leaks. I mean, that's, you know, and that's not really a safety hazard. But if the electrical is not bonded properly, and of course, you know, our inspectors go in and we inspect as best we can, and we're only there for a short period of time, and hopefully we can catch all of the things that are done wrong, but I, I can't guarantee you that, you know, because we're not on the job the whole time, we can't, we can't see everything that goes on. But in, I'd like to address one of Mr. Brown's comments about the plumbing and the painting. Plumbing requires a permit and painting does not. And that, that's really where I'm trying to draw the distinction is, is that if it doesn't require a permit, then, except for those items that were listed in that one part. And I'd also like to mention that the state requires roofing contractors to be registered, and I don't know where the state would fall on volunteers doing roofing. That is a new requirement that's come in as of July of this, this year. The state requires all roofing contractors and to be, to be licensed, or to be registered with the state. And again, that's not a, I mean, they have to show some experience and provide insurance and those types of things, and I think it's, it's an, an attempt to keep the ants off the anthill, if you will, if we will, during a hailstorm or after a hail event.
And I, if I could just bring up another scenario you had in your blue sheet here, and that was the homeowner acting as, as general contractor.
Correct.
And I can see scenarios where a neighbor might solicit the help of his friend next door to help with the roofing or whatever. Can I, can I still go next door and help my neighbor roof his house, or do I, am I not going to be able to do that?
Well, and again, I, I don't know where the state would fall on that. I mean, I haven't done, haven't gone that far, and I believe that was, that's listed in that list for, that you can't do that work. However, I, I, after our discussion today and, and seeing that in there, I don't know that that, my feeling is, is that I would rather have somebody roofing my house than hooking up my electrical that had no experience in that. I mean, I, I know enough about electrical to get shocked. I mean, I, I know where it's all found in the code books, and I know, but I, I rely on, I've got a master electrician on my staff, and that's who I rely on for those heavy duty, you know, I mean, and again, as far as the supervising, we've had that, we've had that discussion before, the, the supervision. We have, we have a lot of general contractors who have, their qualified individuals are in Wichita or Kansas City, and I mean, there's a couple of major contractors here in town who have multiple projects going on at one time, and there's no way you can have that qualified individual on the site all the time. But he is supervising it, he is, it's, it's his supervision, and that, that's the intent of that.
Commissioners, in order to move this item, I, I think first you don't want to leave them in an interim position, not being able to do any of this.
Right.
So I would take us back to the original recommendation, which is to approve what you have on first reading. Allow us to go back, the staff to go back and work with the agencies and try to figure out if there are any other rubs other than the licensed type work, or the skilled type work and any of the other things. We can bring that back to you. I would say give us a couple of weeks because you don't meet next week, and then at that point, if we're far enough off base from the Building Advisory Board, you could choose to send it back or just to take action on it. It'd be your choice.
Sure, sure.
But I think in a couple of weeks, does that make sense? Elvin, we'd be in a position to know if we want to do that or not, bring it back to you.
I think it makes sense. Well, let me, if, if, yeah, in the interest of time moving on.
Certainly to suspend the enforcement.
Unless another commissioner has.
Is that going to work for you, Mr. Brown, and to come back and, and visit with city staff and get those clarifications?
We would make it work.
Okay.
We would like the chance to meet and discuss and pick ideas back and forth.
Good, good.
With, with that in mind, then I would go ahead and, and move that we, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and let her close that public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're good.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that has any comment on this matter?
That's true. Thank you, John.
My name is Tracy Sin, 340 and a half South Connecticut. I've been a volunteer for many years, from California all the way down here to the Midwest. One thing you have to keep in mind is that some of these organization volunteer places are not good people sometimes, not all the time. I've been thrown out at a place that I was volunteered at, and I was dehumanized, to say the least. I've never been treated as such. And because I'm, I'm not a paid staff, they're trying to call the cops on me to get me out of the volunteer place. That was very traumatizing. So when you want to volunteer for the city of Salina, which is a lovely place, you will want to go through volunteer connections and also through churches. Don't volunteer according to who you know, because who you know sometime can kick you out in the rear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comment pertaining to the actual matter on hand? With that, I'd bring it back to the commissioners for a vote.
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10716, but also put a moratorium on enforcement in the interim between first and second reading, and advise staff to meet with some of the agencies involved with using volunteers to perhaps go over any issues or make any minor changes and have that brought back to us this two weeks. Did we decide the two weeks would work?
November 18th.
Bring it back to us November 18th for a potential second reading on that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
And just for the, my knowledge, you'll all reach out to them, and you all, I mean, you guys do this sort of stuff all the time. It's old hat for you. Okay, great.
Item 8.2, acceptance of the offered easement and restricted access dedication from Kansas Wesleyan University and the vacation of a portion of the South Fourth Street, Claflin Avenue, and Osborne Street right-of-way as part of the proposed replat of the portion of the, of the addition of the grounds to Kansas Wesleyan University to be known as the Kansas Wesleyan University Sports Complex Edition.
Mr. Andrew.
We have a couple of planning items on your agenda here. The first item is a proposed replat of the block bounded by South Fourth Street, Claflin Avenue, Osborne Street, and Cloud. And the reason for doing the replat first, we have two items here. One, the replat is going to decide what the boundaries and dimensions of the campus is that Kansas Wesleyan has to work with, and then the companion item, the Plan Development District, will address the actual improvements that will fit within that campus. The very original plat that we're working with here dates back to 1986, or excuse me, 1886, and it actually predates the, the, while that is back in time, the railroad that there is actually was there before the plat was done. So we have a situation where in the downtown area, the plat of original town and Fourth Street was there first, and the railroad got permission from us to put their railroad down Fourth Street. In this case, the railroad was there first, and we had to get permission from there to put Fourth Street in. So the strip of property that's occupied by what is commonly known as South Fourth Street is actually owned by Union Pacific Railroad and leased to the city for street purposes. What Mr. Berger has up there, that is what the actual, it wouldn't look that way today, but that's what the actual plat layout looks like today of this block. And the, in 1999, the city renewed for another 25 years our lease of Fourth Street. John, if you could go back to the previous slide that you had. So this is what we started with in 1886. In 1925, we had a vacation of some of the right-of-way for Osborne Street. In 1930, Russell Avenue and two of the east-west alleys running there were vacated. And then in 1940, with those things being done, the construction of the Glenn Martin Stadium proceeded. And what we're looking at today is a replat of the land holdings bordered by South Fourth Street on the west, Claflin on the north, Osborne on the east, and Cloud Street on the south, and we'd be creating a new subdivision to be called Kansas Wesleyan University Sports Complex Edition. And the goal of the replat is to widen the north-south dimensions of this block by 10 feet from north to south, and to widen the east-west dimension by 38 feet from 510 feet today to 548 feet, and I'll explain how that is being done. But today, the block contains 6.79 acres, and if this replat is approved, it would grow to 7.42 acres. And we don't want to confuse, but wanted to explain that this project has had some modifications from the time it was originally filed and scheduled for a public hearing before the Planning Commission. And the very initial submittal called for the closure of the eastbound or northbound leg of Fourth Street and also vacation of the right-of-way, but leaving the left, the west side unchanged. That original plan called for transferring the lease rights from City of Salina to Kansas Wesleyan University, closure of this east leg of Fourth Street to meet motor vehicle traffic and erection of a fence along the west edge of the Fourth Street paving. Wilson and Company and Kansas Wesleyan were not able to obtain Union Pacific's approval for the transfer of the lease rights, so that, that plan went by the wayside. The plan was then modified essentially to eliminate the closure of the east leg of Fourth Street and to leave that open, but the rest of the plan went forward. So there was a public hearing before the, as the Planning Commission on September the 3rd, and as we indicated, this replat takes those 30 lots and the, and plats them into one large lot and block that would run 590 feet north-south and 548 feet east-west. And if, if we look at our existing conditions today, if you count the railroad right-of-way, it's 160 feet across South Fourth Street, and there is 36 feet of paving on the west and 32 feet of paving on the east leg. Claflin Avenue has 100 feet of right-of-way up here, and it's got 41 feet of paving. Osborne Street is, got 60 feet of right-of-way here and 37 feet of paving, and Cloud Street has 61 feet of right-of-way and 40 feet of paving. It is the only arterial street, and it carries about 8,800 cars a day. The plan that was considered on the September 3rd, as I said, eliminated any changes to Fourth Street, and the primary change was a conversion of Osborne Street to one-way and one-way southbound. The plan that was presented at the September 3rd Planning Commission meeting called for narrowing Osborne Street, the right-of-way by 18 feet and reducing the pavement width to 21 feet. And the, there was quite a bit of feedback from neighboring property owners about that, and at that meeting, the Planning Commission tabled consideration of that replat, and between that and the October 15th meeting at which the improvements were considered, Kansas Wesleyan and Wilson Company had several meetings with the fire department, and they came up with a revised cross-section for Osborne Street. So if, if we back up and look at the other improvements involved, in addition to vacating 10 feet of right-of-way here, there was a plan for putting 39 parking spaces in the right-of-way area on Claflin. That type of recessed onsite parking is not allowed outside the central business district, and it will require special approval by you through a separate license agreement. There are no public or franchise utilities that need to be installed or extended or upsized to support this project. There is a 42-inch concrete storm sewer pipe that runs right along the south edge of the Claflin Avenue right-of-way, and the engineering department is concerned that the proposed fence line for the sports complex would be either over the top of or in very close proximity to that pipeline. So also being proposed, for your separate consideration, would be a license agreement between Kansas Wesleyan between Kansas Wesleyan and the City of Salina whereby Kansas Wesleyan would agree to temporarily remove or relocate that fence or fence panels to allow city crews access to the storm pipeline. So essentially, what's happening is ten feet here that's right-of-way today would be converted to Kansas Wesleyan's ownership, but it doesn't move the location of that pipeline, and that would still be a drainage easement, although their property is subject to our easement and subject to an agreement on their agreeing to allow us to access that pipeline when needed. The other thing that occurred was that the proposal considered on September third called for eliminating twenty-four feet of right-of-way here. Oddly enough, the paved portion of the street is all in the railroad right-of-way, and none of it's in the city's right-of-way, so there are no, there's no paving inside that twenty-four feet that they're requesting to vacate. They're requesting to vacate ten feet on the north off of Claflin, and their original proposal was to vacate eighteen feet along here for Osborne. That was reduced to fourteen feet. And many of these vacations that are being requested are needed to allow Kansas Wesleyan to expand the width and depth of this block to fit their football field, soccer field, and especially the eight-lane track. So as I mentioned, the initial public hearing was advertised had, was for the purpose of getting feedback about Fourth Street. That was taken from the table, so the focus at the September third Planning Commission meeting was about Osborne. And the original plan was for twenty-one feet of paving and forty-two feet of right-of-way. They went back to the drawing board, looked at a number of cross-sections, and so our final focus here is on Osborne. Today, Osborne has sixty feet of right-of-way over here. There's thirty-seven feet of paving back of curb to back of curb. That allows for two travel lanes and an eight-and-a-half-foot parking lane on the east side. And that was all reconstructed and resurfaced in two thousand. And that roadway is centered, the thirty-seven feet is centered right in the sixty feet, so there's eleven-and-a-half feet of right-of-way each side. The proposal is to take fourteen feet off of this side, which would be converted over to Kansas Wesleyan's ownership. The paving would be reduced so that the total paving width would be twenty-nine feet. That would allow for a twenty-and-a-half-foot travel lane for emergency vehicles and general flow of traffic. There would be eight-and-a-half feet of a parking lane along the east side, eleven-and-a-half feet between the curb and the right-of-way line, and then there would be space for a five-foot curbside sidewalk in the right-of-way between the curb line and Kansas Wesleyan's perimeter fence. So this revised right-of-way profile and design provides for continued emergency vehicle access coming from Fire Station Number Two and in a southbound pattern. It also allows residents who, or tenants who live along here to have on-street parking in front of their residence. And the impact on Kansas Wesleyan was that their original plan went from five-hundred-and-fifty-two feet of width to five-hundred-and-forty-eight feet of width, and they were able to get that four feet out of there without negatively affecting the design and layout of their facilities. So again, they're gaining twenty-four feet here and fourteen feet here for that's thirty-eight feet of width, and then they're getting ten feet along Claflin to both deepen and widen their lot. So the Planning Commission reopened the public hearing on this on October the fifteenth. There were representatives from Kansas Wesleyan and Wilson and Company who spoke. There were no comments on the replat or on Osborne from neighboring property owners. Many of those staff visited with, and they were satisfied with the twenty-nine-foot one-way design. And so the Planning Commission voted to approve the replat, subject to the five conditions that you see on page eight of your report on the plat. And one of those deals with retaining this ten-foot easement up here as a drainage easement for the storm pipeline. Item two requires that a separate license agreement on terms acceptable to you as a governing body be entered into before that fence is constructed, whereby Kansas Wesleyan would agree to temporarily remove or relocate that at their effort and expense if we need to make repairs or replace that storm pipeline, which carries runoff from the ninth and Claflin intersection over to the Second Street slough. Item three requires that the right-of-way profile for Osborne will be forty-six feet here. It will consist of a one-way southbound street with twenty-nine feet of paving width, which will consist of a twenty-and-a-half-foot travel lane and eight-and-a-half-foot parking lane on the east side. Condition number four makes Kansas Wesleyan responsible for making all physical modifications to Osborne Street to convert it from two-way to one-way traffic, including installation of all traffic control signs. And then we have a recommended supplement to that condition, which is there at the bottom of page eight, and we're recommending that condition number four be amended or supplemented to also make Kansas Wesleyan University responsible for doing a supplemental traffic analysis, where they look at the detailed traffic signal warrant for the continued need for the traffic signal at Osborne and Cloud based on one-way traffic on Osborne Street, and that they also recommend whatever needed updates there are to the signal heads, the locations, the signal timing, crosswalk locations, pavement marking, and striping, and that they also use current pedestrian counts and traffic counts and records of recent accidents at the intersection in their analysis, and that they should conclude by assessing the need for and recommend a location for a marked or signalized crosswalk on Cloud Street. And that they would be responsible for making all those modifications that were recommended by the traffic analysis and approved by the city engineer. So John, I don't know if you have an aerial photo there you can go to and zoom in on What condition number four is referring to is making all the modifications to Osborne, signage, striping, otherwise to make that a one-way street. But then presently, what they would be doing is constructing a five-foot sidewalk down this side that's likely going to result, but won't necessarily result in the crosswalk being placed there. That would be the preferred route. But we're also, as you see here, this left-hand turn lane, if Osborne is one-way southbound, we're eliminating this left turn movement, so this will need to be restriped in some fashion. So condition number four asks for Kansas Wesleyan and Wilson Company to do a supplement to their traffic analysis they've already done and focus on the signals, on the crosswalk markings, and perhaps even on the ultimate location for that crossing there. The signals are there not because of vehicle traffic, but the signals are there to provide a protected crosswalk for St. Mary's Elementary School students, at least that's why it's there historically. But one thing that's most notable there is almost a complete lack of sidewalks leading to it. So if you look at this profile, you'll have a one-way street going southbound. It will be narrowed by eight feet. This will be a parking lane. This will be a travel lane, and then you'll have a five-foot sidewalk here that will come down the west side next to a fence line for the sports complex. So this comes to you with approval from the Planning Commission and a recommendation from staff to consider an addition to condition number four that would spell out in additional detail the obligation to address the Osborne-Cloud intersection and traffic signal. And so there's a lot of things related to the improvements on the property, but I want to focus the questions here on just the boundaries of this property. And again, to highlight that the vacations that are being discussed are taking twenty-four feet of right-of-way from Fourth Street, ten feet from Claflin, and a total of fourteen feet from Osborne, and that will define the new boundaries of their campus if approved.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
And we do have representatives of the university and Kenz- and Wilson and Company, if you have questions of them.
Commissioner, just to add a little bit to that, too. It's kind of interesting, and in my office, I have a nineteen oh-three map of the city. That's a cool history document because it shows the bookends on Santa Fe of the north, St. John's Military School, and the south is, of course, Kansas Wesleyan. There's nothing south of that. The property's platted east of there, but there are no buildings. It shows little buildings on there, and there are no buildings. And so obviously, at that time, they could pretty much do whatever they want. That was the south end of the city. But now, it's the middle of the city. And when we went into this as a staff, we recognized that one of the strategic plan goals that you have is to grow our educational institutions. That's one of the things that was added not too long ago. But at the same time, we have to balance that with the needs of nearby residents. And so, you know, the main big groups, DRT and Wesleyan folks, got together, and then we pretty much took care of most everything, and then we were really trying to figure out that street because of the widths. And ideally, you would just pick up, you know, what's kind of in the way and move it all over, and everybody would be happy, and you can't do that. But quite honestly, I think most people are happy, and one of the advantages of the one-way street is that it eliminates northbound traffic. So if you're, you know, if you don't live on that street, yeah, you might choose a different route, but if you do, it actually eliminates some of the traffic and makes it better, more like you would like to have in your subdivision. So that was based really on some of the folks that we'd assigned, just to sit down and work with them and say, we've got one last problem, see if we can figure this thing out and mitigate, because we can't make it perfect, but we can mitigate and take away the impact if we can. And so I really think, I was very proud of our staff and really excited about the way they and all the Kansas Wesleyan folks got together and really worked through this and tried to figure out the best thing for the residents there and everybody in that area. And I think what we've got for you is a pretty good plan. I think it's the best you're going to see to allow your university there to grow and to eliminate any problems associated with it.
Thank you, Mr. Gage.
So the, if you are in agreement with the Planning Commission, the appropriate action would be to approve a motion that would approve the vacation of the portion of those streets and accept the offered drainage easement and restricted access dedications and would authorize Mayor Shirley to sign the replat.
Mr. Andrew, with that, on just that last statement, would we need to add the additional supplemental condition to that as well?
Yes, that was not included in the Planning Commission's action, but we are recommending that that condition number four, if you were to say with the five conditions recommended by the Planning Commission, with condition number four as amended, that would cover it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, do I have any public comment on this matter?
Good afternoon, I'm Matt Thompson. I'm the president of Kansas Wesleyan at one hundred East Claflin. And I'm very pleased to be able to talk to you about this project today. It is an exciting opportunity, we believe, not just for Kansas Wesleyan, but also for the community. This is a piece of property that has unfortunately has become a bit blighted in the last few years and really needs to be improved. And as I first arrived in town and started talking about this project, one of the first things I heard was the need for the track to be reinstated into the project, which was not previously there. When we do this project, assuming your approval, it will create an eight-lane track. It will be the only one in town. Salina Stadium does not have, there are only seven lanes, which means they can't hold statewide competitions. This would allow us to hold statewide high school competitions in addition to our competitions. It would also allow us to be, continue to be good neighbors and partners with Sacred Heart, as well as with Salvation Army and others. We really do think this is in the best interest of the community. We think it's an improvement for the neighborhood, and we've worked aggressively and positively with our neighbors, as well as with the entire staff here, and are very appreciative of their efforts. I've lived in many communities over the years, and I would say this is the best community I've found in terms of working towards solutions to the project to make it seem viable and doable, as opposed to putting obstacles up. And I really appreciate all the staff's effort, as well as the community members' efforts to come in and share their opinions with us. Be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
I don't have a question, do have a comment, though, and I recognize in reading this material that, and actually just by driving by, that Kansas Wesleyan is truly landlocked. And as City Manager Gage mentioned, it is one of the jewels of the educational system in our city, and it's one that we need to preserve and take care of as much as we can. And I think that the solution that has been provided is the optimal solution, and I think it's a good one, should be supported.
Great, thank you for those nice comments.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? No, okay. Any other comment from the audience?
My name is Tracy Sin. I'd just like to give a compliment to Dr. Thompson for having over a hundred percent people signing up everywhere, around everywhere, coming to the finest, finest university I've ever seen. People from all walk of life. I've been there myself many times, attending music and everything else, and this is going to be money ringing in into the City of Salina. Congratulations, Dr. Thompson.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a vote.
Madam Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the plat authorizing the vacation of portions of the South Fourth Street, Claflin Avenue, and Osborne Street right-of-way as requested and accept the offered drainage easement, restricted access dedications, and with the five conditions made by the Planning Commission, with the addition of supplemental condition to condition number four on behalf of the city.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero. And before we go on to item eight point three, I'm going to take a real quick restroom break, if that's okay.
Just a second.
Senator John Kitzhobber announced they would hire-
If only radio Kansas listeners will rise to the challenge. One, eight-hundred-seven-two-three.
... is resolved, so we can go along with our meeting and continue to item eight point three.
Item eight point three, application number PDD thirteen dash two, two A, requesting a change in zoning district classification from U District to PDD-
Hey, guys, we are back in session. We can't, we can't hear what our city clerk's saying. We called it back session a minute ago.
Spirited combo.
District to PDD U, an approval of our preliminary development plan to allow redevelopment of the Kansas Wesleyan Sports Complex facility. Sub item eight point three A, first reading ordinance number thirteen, ten thousand seven-hundred-twenty-three.
Mr. Andrew, welcome back.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, the first item that we addressed basically established the perimeter outline of this sports complex block, and this item is to summarize and hopefully approve the improvements that would go inside of that. And we just wanted you to have the benefit of the background on two items related to this property that were previously dealt with. One was the fact that the City of Salina had designated the Glen L. Martin Stadium Grandstand as a heritage conservation property in nineteen ninety-seven, and we've outlined some of the reasons for that, both the significance of Glen L. Martin himself and the fact that this was a works project, or Works Progress Administration project that was done under Franklin Roosevelt's New Deal, and it has some unique features, particularly this native sandstone block construction that were part of that. As we pointed out to you on August the fourteenth, the Heritage Commission considered the application filed by Kansas Wesleyan requesting a certificate of appropriateness to allow demolition and removal of the existing grandstand, that and two stone ticket booths as well. The Heritage Commission approved that by a four-to-zero vote, and they had one condition associated with that, and that was that Kansas Wesleyan- associated with that, and that was that Kansas Wesleyan University create a historical marker on the site that would commemorate the grandstands association with Glenn L. Martin and also the National Youth Administration component of the Works Progress Administration program. And they have, at Kansas Wesleyan, has agreed to do that. It is a work in progress at this point. But the issuance of a demolition permit is authorized by the Heritage Commission, which will allow the existing grandstand to be removed and make way for construction of a new grandstand. The City Commission also dealt with, and Planning Commission dealt with, plans for placing advertising signs on the rear of the existing stadium scoreboard. And there was actually a conditional use permit that was issued to allow that for a duration of five years, subject to review and possible renewal at a later date. The plans now indicate that that will be either removed or relocated, and so that conditional use permit will probably need to be revisited. But as you are aware, plans have been unveiled to construct a new campus athletic facility. It would involve the removal of the existing stone masonry and concrete Glenn Martin Stadium Grandstand, construction of a new grandstand with a new one-story press box above the stands, new concession areas and restrooms, an eight-lane track, expanded locker room facility. So I'm going to go over those specifically and in detail. The proposed improvements are a 224-foot by 42-foot stadium grandstand, and John, I think I'll just have you go to the facility's site plan, if you could. So we've got a, we've got a grandstand here that's 224 feet long, 42 feet wide, has 2,000 seats, possibility of expansion by an additional 500 seats at each end. We've got a hardscape plaza area along, John, if you could go back, please. We've got a hardscape plaza area along here. That would have gates, ticket booths, covered pavilions down in this location, and some form of memorial to Glenn Martin and the Works Progress Administration. There would be an eight-lane track constructed around the football field. There would be a new locker room in the northeast corner of the block with the ability to expand onto the east side of that. And then we'd have installation of a artificial turf practice field in the southeast corner. And wanted to point out that the athletic facilities are a permitted use in the university zoning district. But as we were working with Kansas Wesleyan and Wilson and Company, we determined that there were some unique design and layout aspects that didn't fit within the parameters of the university zoning district. So we recommended to Kansas Wesleyan, their design team, that the planned development district process be used to address these design and layout issues. And so, an application and plans were submitted, and October 15th was set as the hearing date for the Planning Commission to review those. And the two main differences between straight or standard zoning and a planned development district is, planned development district allows you to customize a zoning district for a particular proposed development, and then it also requires a site-specific plan be submitted as part of the zoning change. So the plan that you have on the screen there today is the plan that was submitted. We've outlined for you all the various zoning district requirements in the university district, and the one that proved most problematic in this case was the fact that due to the campus setting and all, it has a standard 50-foot building setback required for all buildings and improvements. And I would point you out to page nine of the report, and that sets out all the modifications that are being requested. And so, over on this side, we have a grandstand that would be 15 feet from the Fourth Street lease line instead of the 50-foot setback required, and a ticket booth up here that would be 24 foot from the Fourth Street lease line along Claflin. We have a covered pavilion that would be three feet from the Claflin Avenue property line, and the ticket booth 11 feet from that same property line. On Osborne, the proposed extension of this fieldhouse building would extend to within four feet of the Osborne Street property line. And on the south, we've got a covered pavilion here, a ticket booth over here, and a stadium scoreboard here that would be inside the 50-foot building setback line. So they are proposing or requesting a modification of the 50-foot setback for those improvements. I think we would note that this block, if you look back to 1940, this block has been continuously used for athletic facilities serving Kansas Wesleyan University and has shown to be suitable for that use. And if you look at the character of the neighborhood, there's nothing that is a use here that's being requested or proposed that is not already allowed under the university district. There's not going to be any need for a public utility or public improvement investments on behalf of the city to support this, and Kansas Wesleyan will be responsible for making all modifications to the surrounding street and sidewalk system. We pointed out to you that Wilson and Company on Kansas Wesleyan's behalf did submit a traffic analysis, and their recommendation for making Osborne one-way southbound was that the traffic volumes are low and the current flow doesn't show a preference or predominance in either direction. The southbound travel provides for a circulation around the block that is consistent with this parking alignment and allows for all right turns. You eliminate the north-turning movement down here off of Cloud Street onto Osborne, and making it southbound would also facilitate emergency access coming from Station 2 and trying to get to this neighborhood or down to Cloud Street. There were some things still that needed to be addressed in a detailed follow-up study that was addressed in your condition on the plat and will be addressed subsequently. The future land use map shows this block as public, semi-public land use, so their plan is consistent with that. And so, the streetscape, John, if you could go to the various cross-sections, and we'll just kind of walk our way around. This is the Fourth Street cross-section, and what you'll have is you'll have a stadium, the overhang from the press box, there'll be a hardscape plaza here, there'll be a fence here, there'll be a seven-foot buffer here to protect drivers and provide a cushion with the fence. Curb line will be moved into here, and then it will continue to function as a northbound leg with no on-street parking on that side. As far as Claflin, John, if you could go to that. And Claflin, the traffic way will remain unchanged. This just demonstrates that the parking stalls that are proposed in the right-of-way will not in any way encroach out to or affect the path of travel or the traveled way. There'll be a five-foot sidewalk between the parking area and the fence line, and this is probably a little closer to here and a little closer to the surface, but this represents the storm pipeline, and this is the location of the fence. And then the fencing, they're proposing the wrought iron material with brick or masonry pilasters. And I don't know if one of those maybe have a better elevation of the fence, John? Or maybe if we go to Osborne, we'll see it. This is the cross-section for Osborne. You'll have the fence line. This is the old property line. This is the new property line, five-foot curbside sidewalk, 20-foot traveled lane. Then we have the parking lane over here, and then 11 and 1/2 feet of right-of-way there. So that's kind of a walk around the streetscape. There are no changes to Cloud Street being proposed at all at this time. The approach that we've taken with Kansas Wesleyan University as far as off-street parking is we've taken a campus-wide approach with their assistance and some of the assistance of their design professionals. We have come up with a total available parking of 782 parking spaces, and that includes a 170 spaces that are across the street at St. Mary's through a shared parking agreement between Kansas Wesleyan and St. Mary's. And so, based on that number, we have 33 surplus spaces currently. They're proposing to add 39 spaces on Claflin. That will bump us up to that. But one thing we wanted to get in the record that could either be added as an additional condition in the planned development district, or at least we would want to get into the record, is that we're basically doing a one-for-one trade-out in terms of the old stadium grandstand in this section here. But if we were to build additional grandstand that would raise the seating capacity to 3,000 seats, then Kansas Wesleyan would need to provide additional off-street parking to support that additional seating, unless some form of parking variance were applied for and granted. But our suggestion is that you may wish to add a condition clarifying that the stadium grandstand seating capacity is limited to 2,000, and no addition will be permitted without the provision of additional off-street parking. We've given you quite a bit of detail about the parking situation on the east side of Osborne, but from what we can tell, those owners and residents are satisfied with the plan that provides them parking on the east side of Osborne. And so, the Planning Commission also had a public hearing on this on October the 15th, 2013, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the creation of a planned development district for this project, including the exceptions and modifications requested as to setback. And so, some of their conditions were that use be limited to athletic facilities serving Kansas Wesleyan. They identified the exceptions and that Kansas Wesleyan would be responsible for construction of the buffer, a new east curb line between the west stadium fence and the northbound lane of South Fourth Street, that they would be responsible for constructing, at least providing for a separate left and right-hand turn lanes at the south Fourth Claflin intersection. They would be responsible for construction of these stalls, if approved by you through a license agreement. They would be responsible for making the physical modifications to Osborne to narrow it to 29 feet, and also construction of a sidewalk on the west side there. It would require a separate license agreement approved by you before these spaces are constructed, a separate license agreement addressing the fence line over the storm pipeline. It would address providing a landscape plan, just as a buffer for this parking area between there and the housing area, and also some middle of site lighting plans before those are mounted, just to make sure we can review them for height and light spill. And the final condition there is that development shall be completed in accordance with the site development plan, building elevation, ornamental fencing, elevation drawings, which are here incorporated by reference. John, I don't know if I skipped over the elevation drawings for the stadium and the fieldhouse, but if you'd like to show those, we'll... This would be the elevations of the grandstand structure, and it would be primarily a steel structure with brick wainscoting at the base. And then, the fieldhouse structure would also be a metal building, again, with brick wainscoting at the base that would be consistent with the stadium. I guess this is the fence elevation I was looking for, which would be a wrought iron fence with brick or masonry pilasters at intervals. But this is, this fence treatment would be all the way around the perimeter of the complex. And so, this comes to you with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. If you agree with that recommendation, the attached ordinance should be approved on first reading. And we indicated there was a possibility of adding a ninth condition, just to clarify that the stadium grandstand seating is limited to 2,000 seats, and no additional stadium grandstand seating should be permitted without provision of additional off-street parking.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Do I have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, but first, I'd just like to compliment Mr. Andrew, the really great work that you did to put this together. There were so many moving parts, and I think from getting all the right people, making the decisions, and going with the PDD and all that, I think you, I think you did a great job on that. And then also Wilson and Company at Kansas Wesleyan as well.
It looks fantastic.
Yeah.
We don't like writing 20-page reports, but in this case-
Almost as much as we don't like looking at them.
This one wasn't too bad to look at, though.
It was extensive, and you boiled it down really nicely, so it was quite a bit easier to digest. So, a quick question, though, on the, on the parking, because that's the only thing that really concerns me, is that you had mentioned that we do have the ability down the road to waive parking, should that part of the stadium-
Yes, there are different mechanisms for dealing with that, but what we're saying is that based on the analysis and availability today, the no-net change to the stadium doesn't trigger any parking requirement, but it's 2,000 seats today, it'll be 2,000 seats when this is built, but if we get into these additions, then we at least have to say, "Okay, how are you providing for more parking?" Or they would have the option of requesting some sort of variance or reduction to their parking requirement based on their unique circumstances at that time.
And is it possible that they, that there might be adequate parking that might be a little bit, a little bit further away from the stadium that, that would be adequate to count towards those numbers? I mean, it is part of the game day experience-
We're looking at it as an overall campus number, so that would add to the overall campus number, and as long as it is part of the campus, then they can decide how that's allocated. The other thing that's unique here is that you have a resident campus population of students, most of who are going to walk to the game and not need parking spaces. In other words, if they already have their cars at a dormitory or where they live, they're probably going to not need a separate place to park to go to a game.
Right. My concern is only that, I would encourage, and hopefully they need that extra capacity, but that, the burden of needing to provide additional parking doesn't get in the way of making those types of upgrades. And so, it sounds like if there's a waiver opportunity, that that may-
That, I think the way we're proposing to do that is if everything goes well and they do want to expand, we will have to address parking at that time, but under this scenario, parking is adequate.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you again. Any public comment, or, Mr. Thompson, anything else you'd like to add? Besides applauding, you know, the great efforts everyone's done.
Yeah, I would like to agree with that absolutely, and thank you for your previous vote. We, as I said, are very excited about this project, but we'd happy to answer any additional questions you may have at this time for the university.
I can't wait to see it built.
I know.
You and me both.
Well, my daughter and I go up there quite, she's a, she does cross-country, so she was actually there yesterday. She ran two miles in the 50 mile an hour wind.
Well, yes.
She did.
It'll be even nicer with an actual paved track, yes.
You know, I can't wait for a new track.
I just want to, I want to thank you again. I did go over and meet with you, and you gave me a tour of the campus, and I want to say, I hadn't been there, even though my parents live just across the street from it, I hadn't been there in years. And it's, it really is a good-looking campus, and you guys are doing a lot, making the roof lines match. The stadium is going to tie into it, and I think it's really going to be a nice thing as they live across the street. It'll be nice for them, too. So, but I think it's really just nice for Salina and some of the other things we discussed, maybe trying to do some work down there in South Santa Fe and really bring that back. I think it's a real driver for activity in that area, and we look forward to making that happen. And you're a young guy. I was surprised to be meeting with a president who was, I think, five years younger than me. I just thought, "When did I become a college president?" And so, and I think I commented to you, I said, "Why are things moving about as fast as they want, or do you move a little faster than they were hoping?" And either way, whether they were wanting you to move this fast or be this active, I'm glad you are, and I- glad you are, and I think it's a real benefit to Salina. We're glad to have you here, and I think the college will do great things with you at the helm, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
I agree.
And I'd just like to thank you for your leadership on this, and then also your, a lot of the ideas that I'm sure you have, that you've shared some of them, of how to move the university and the community along. I'd also like to thank you for, you know, as mentioned earlier, that the neighborhood's been kinda, that's a blight on the neighborhood somewhat. It's not that bad, but it really does help to revitalize that neighborhood, and so that fits in with our plan and a lot of the other things that we wanna do. So I wanna compliment you and the university on undertaking such a big project.
Thank you very much. It is not me that is doing this. It is a campus-wide administrative function with a lot of support from our alumni and friends, and that we're all able to do this together. So thank you for your nice comments.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Any other public comment? Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis from the Salina Chamber of Commerce. I just wanna echo some of the other comments and extend one other point. The school I graduated from was about, just a little bit larger than Kansas, or the school I graduated my undergrad from was slightly larger than Wesleyan is today, and today they're half again bigger. And I know from sitting in meetings with Matt and some of his staff that my undergrad alma mater is held up as an example of schools in the central and northern plains, is one of the fastest-growing and well-managed schools in America. The point being, there's an economic development aspect to that, as the number of students can move from, you know, 700 or 800 to 1300 or 1400. Those are dollars that are into this community, and those are people that are renting rooms or renting apartments or, and spending money and then creating that long-term labor availability issue that remains a challenge in the community. And I know in my undergrad alma mater, and I know that President Thompson has met with the president of that school, a lot of it started with upgrades to Olson Stadium and the changes that have occurred there. And these sorts of upgrades are gonna make a big difference in terms of their recruiting. And I do wanna thank Jason, the first time I suggested a meeting with Jason and myself to meet with Matt, talk about this. His response echoed everything I just said about the economic development, and he alluded to that in his comments, and I'm thankful that that extended through the rest of the staff and Dean and Roger Williams and others on the city team, and just thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you. Any other public comment? CNN, I bring it back to Commissioner.
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 13-10723 on first reading. Do we need to add the parking, or is that already sort of understood, as we already have parking regulations?
I think it's understood that it will be addressed at a later time. I just wanted to get that in the record, that it is adequate today, and it will have to be reevaluated if any additions to seating is proposed.
So as presented on this ordinance is fine, then?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10723 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Any other business?
I do have something on our other business.
Yeah.
There's a yearly award that's given to clerk and, city clerk and finance officers at the annual league of municipalities. It's called the Mildred Advanced City Clerk Award, and it is for those city clerks who've made significant contributions to their association and to their city. I move this commission and mayor sign the appropriate paperwork and enter our city clerk, Luann Elsley, into the nominations. Have to be there by December 31st.
Okay, well, I would, I don't know if we need to make a formal action on that, but we'll second whatever we need to do.
I'll second, unless we need to add it to the agenda.
Do we need to add it to the agenda to?
As long as you're willing to do the work, it doesn't matter.
We're willing to do the work.
We're willing to do the work. It's a very unofficial action, I think you're fine.
Okay, fantastic.
She puts up with all this every Monday, so she deserves an award.
Maybe we should send along a videotape of us up here fumbling, her saving us, maybe that would help, yeah.
Especially when there's those second motions.
Yeah, the roll call motion.
I'd also like to thank staff for putting together a really effective study session, double study session this afternoon. It was very informative, well-attended, and very informational, so I appreciate the hard work that went into that.
Very up with people today around here. Do you really notice? It's just been like one little thing after another. Lovely blouse you have on today, Kay.
Yeah. Now for the good, now for the fun part. Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 60 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters, subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at 6:50.
7:50.
No, 6:50.
Oh, 6:50. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right, although I'd like to reconvene at 7:50. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are in executive session.
Mayor and Commissioners, just for the folks-at-home's perspective, we don't expect any action afterwards.
Thank you.